Hello, there it is. Good morning, everybody. We need to get, go ahead and get started on this morning's Graham County Board of Supervisors meeting. Let's go ahead and I'll call this meeting to order on June seventeenth, twenty twenty four. And I've asked Vice Chairman Clay Mack to lead us in the pledge, please. Welcome, everybody. Do we have anybody online? Well, first off, let's go ahead. If I could get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting and work session held on June third.
So move, Mr. Chairman. I'll second that, sorry.
I'll make that unanimous. And next, approve demands and handwritten warrants, air bills.
Chairman, Howard, I move that we go ahead and approve the demands and handwritten warrants, requests for payments as presented. I'll second that.
Make that unanimous. Okay, first up, we have Sheriff PJ Allred with a few items.
Good morning. So, yeah, I got two or three little deals real quick. The first one is the approval of an unbudgeted capital purchase, which to not exceed thirty nine hundred dollars for the ALIS supplies, which is the active shooter program that we do in schools and present also in businesses, different places around that wants that type of training. But these supplies are with funds that are awarded to us by the United Way of Graham and Greenlee County. So it's funds that we've already gotten, but we're asking, anyway, just get the supplies that we need for that.
Thank you, Sheriff, for that, that program, the training and stuff you guys offer has been valuable to us. So I really want to thank you for pursuing that and getting that out to where we all can have more discussion and comments.
Just that the United Way again and again and again for Graham County and residents of Graham and Greenlee County come through with the generous donations or, or funding of, of things that would not ordinarily be easy to fund. I'd go ahead and make a motion that we do approve the, the capital purchase of the ALIS supplies. I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, so our, our next one that we have, look, I'm gonna ask my T, well, I'm ask TJ, the commander, to come up here and talk about it because this is something that, that he's worked really hard at as our commander. Done a great job at it, and I just kind of want to have him, because I, I have no, no problems. I'm thinking you guys are gonna be okay with this one, so I don't understand. But I want him to be able to take some kudos off of this because he works really hard in this area for us, and he can explain this for us.
Thank you. So, the Nigel certificates is, I'm only, I'm requesting twelve positions. The reason it is, is that so are, are supervisors, are frontline supervisors, to lieutenants, to myself. What it is, is it's a national certification, which is a lot of hours online. For example, the N C C E, which me and the two lieutenants will be taking is a hundred fifteen hours online. They're courses that are designed to, to train on how correctional professionals run a jail. It's just more knowledge and suit, and for sergeants, that also gives them the knowledge and, and how to run their shifts and, and the liability that they look at. So what it is, and it's further education is what it is. And right now, in Arizona, we'll be the only ones that will be going through this training besides one, one other county who just started doing this, which is Navajo. This is a, it's a great tool. They get the, they get their certification after they complete all the courses. They'll receive the certifications, but it also helps mitigate liability because of knowledge. And they'll be well trained to run their shifts, and the new people that are coming onto the shifts, they could train, train them.
Question, discussion?
I, I read through Commander, and the, the cost is certainly reasonable, affordable. It's under two thousand dollars apiece. And in addition to the, your internal training, it's always good to have outside information, you know, in case you didn't cover something, that's just a great overall program. So commend you for your, your desire to improve the, the training and, and the information base for your officer. It'll, it'll benefit Graham County. With that, I'll, I'll make a, a motion that we go ahead and approve the request. I understand that they'll, they'll take six at a time, requests for, for the twelve detention employees to go to the online training academy for detention. Yes, I'll second that.
I'll make that unanimous. Thank you, PJ. Good job in wheeling the jail, gathering, and running with it. You're doing a fantastic job, and it's not going unnoticed. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm very proud of TJ and the things that he gets a hold of and works, works over there so hard doing. Okay, so I think my last, yeah, my last little agenda item right here is going to ask for, for the approval to apply for the twenty twenty four State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, SCAP program. This is through the Justice Benefits. This is a continuous grant, and it, it provides this federal assistance and some federal monies that, anyway, there's some more in-depth type stuff, but basically we can get up to a thousand, up to over six thousand dollars depending on our reporting period of that year. And this, this money can be used for like construction, training, education for offender, training for correction officers to help manage offender population, consultants. Just, this is one of those that can actually be used for quite a few different things. Instead of just one item and that's it. So, and we're just asking if we're able to, to, to go ahead and apply for this for the twenty twenty four.
Discussion, comments?
Just briefly, you know, if this is Roswell, the Alien Assistance Program might take on a different aspect. But this is for, for missed, for two misdemeanors or a felony for people who are not legal citizens, and reimburses the jail for housing them for short periods. And, and it's great to, to have that kind of additional funding, because we certainly have the expense. So I, I'm in, in favor of, of supporting this request. I'll second that.
Make that unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Next, we have Graham County Attorney Scott Bennett.
Good morning. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. This is a follow-up on something that the board has previously approved. If you'll remember, some time ago, we came with a request that we designate some of the opioid settlement proceeds and donate that to the Sub, Graham County Substance Abuse Coalition to go to the building of what at the time we called the, the Female House of Hope. It's my understanding it's now being referred to as Carrying Hearts. But ultimately, thanks to some very fine work by, by our Chief Civil Deputy Gene Roof, we've completed the contract, and we're ready to give those funds over so we can help them with their, their facility. Just simply more for the public perhaps than even for the board. These funds were given to this, to us after a settlement involving lawsuits over the, the over prescript, prescribing of opioids, and they were given to us for the limited purpose of helping with rehab and drug interdiction programs. Ultimately, this particular cause is the exact purpose of these funds. They're coming from private institutions. There's no taxpayer money. This is purely the benefits of a lawsuit that was settled, and we're using the funds as they were designated. So where the board had previously approved this, we now have the contract complete. We're asking the board to approve the contract and authorize the, the funds to actually be submitted to the Graham County Substance Abuse Coalition.
Scott, I have a question on that. The state just recently passed a budget this weekend, yesterday I believe it was. Will that have an effect? Because I noticed that there was some opioid conversation there on the funding with the opioid crisis. Have you seen that, or, or do we already have these funds available?
Yeah, these funds are in our account. There, there was some discussion of using opioid settlement funds to help other shortfall. I haven't had the opportunity, the final budget, I think, I want to say came in Saturday night. I, I haven't reviewed it yet. I did review a draft, which I think hit my desk Thursday-ish, Wednesday or Thursday, sometime in there. And that was definitely one of the ideas from discussion with other individuals. We questioned the validity of that idea of sweeping some of these funds, but ultimately, it's my position that these have been approved by the board. They're in our account. They've been earmarked, and we have a responsibility to follow through with our previous agreement. So if they come to sweep funds, certainly there's going to be some major legal issues with that, and I imagine everything will get frozen for a while. But if we send it out today, I think we're in compliance with, with the purpose of the funds, what we previously promised to do, and what we now have a contract to complete.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I just want to thank Scott and Kathy and the Substance Abuse Coalition for all you guys do. You guys do a, do a great work in our community, and we're blessed to have you guys here.
And our chairman, who, this is one of, a, a project which is near and dear to his heart, that he's invested a lot of, of time and, and effort into this. So our, our chairman Howard needs to be included in that.
And I want to thank Kathy very much for all the work she does. She's here, so we acknowledge her and, and her expertise over there and her diligence on, on fighting the drugs and prevention and recoveries and everything else. So thank you, Kathy, very, very much. So I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve community service agreement between Graham County and the Graham County Substance Abuse Coalition.
And I'll go ahead and, and second that motion. So we, we've made the, the motions, but we could also just do a, a vote, since, since a motion doesn't necessarily, it allows for discussion, but it's not always approval. So I would, you, you're, you're in charge. You want to call for the vote?
Can I get a vote on the, the agreement between Graham County and the Graham County Substance Abuse Coalition?
Board Member David, aye.
Board Member Mac, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Next, we have Ms. Darnin Montier, Assessor's Office.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here to ask your approval for a service agreement with just a praise for deed management services with the assessor's office.
Discussions, questions?
If, this, this purports to replace a, a full-time employee with a fifteen thousand dollar a year software package and, and training. And, I mean, you know, our employees are valued, but if this, if you can really replace a full-time position, this is the deal of the century.
Yeah, it is. I'm, I mean, the, you know, it wouldn't completely replace somebody. We're hoping to get by with that because the other person is answering phones and helping people. You know, so there's a lot that other, that individual does, but this will do a lot. And we have had a difficult time keeping this position filled. And so I think this will be a real asset to our office and to the county.
Very good. I'll, I'll move that we go ahead and approve this request for the, the S B I T A package for, for, for software and, and for the assessor's office. I'll second that.
Make that unanimous.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Cindy Orr, Pejers.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm delighted to present seven offers for tax deed parcels. These offers include all the taxes, fees, and interest that has accrued on these properties.
Questions, comments?
Where'd it go? I'll, I'll move that with our, our, my appreciation and appreciation of the board for, for taking these non-performing parcels and, and recouping our, our taxes from them, and that, that's great. And, and that gives an opportunity for people to then develop these and, and, and build homes and add to our tax base. So I, I would approve the, your request for the over the county tax deeds for the, I, I think there's seven parcels. I'll second that.
I will make that unanimous, and thank you once again, Cindy. Super Cindy, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Bryce, Engineering.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Destin. Morning. This is to ask for approval to ratify intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for the either river path design. This is some funding that we received from an application for Transportation Alternative Grant to design linear path along the river. And this agreement then is with ADOT to go ahead with that design. Now, they've selected a consultant, and so we'll proceed from that.
Questions, comments?
Now, this is, you know, we, we've got to, to approve this in order to get the funding from ADOT, in order to move this process, the design process along. So it's, it's really a formality, and, and the terms are, are typical template ADOT terms. So I, I'd move that we go ahead and approve this and, and get our consultant busy designing this, this project for us. I'll second that.
Make it unanimous. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Next, we have Hannah Doots, election.
Good morning. Well, primary elections is just around the corner, so I'm here to add.
So I'm here to ask the board's approval of our vote centers and polling place for the primary election pursuant to Arizona Statute sixteen dash four eleven. We have nine locations total. We've got six of them that are our vote centers and then three of them are our precinct-based poll locations. And so these are what I present to the board and ask your approval of these.
Comments, discussion?
It's great to have the voting centers and allow people the flexibility to vote where, you know, where they're closest to, rather than having to go, if they're working on one side of the county, go all the way to their precinct to vote. So it's a great idea, thank you for your efforts on this.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vote center and polling place list that's been presented. I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make that unanimous.
Thank you. And then I do have one more item and it's approval of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh six. And this is for authorizing emergency election centers. So this is provided for voters who have emergencies, which would prevent them from going to the polls on election day. And state statute does require that this resolution be limited to a specific election date. So this is why I bring another resolution for each election.
So it's the day before the election is when people can come here to vote. And that would be if they have a, an emergency that says that they won't be able to vote the next day. So that gives them an option. That's a great idea. And I'm just glad that it's a day rather than a whole weekend.
Yes.
Okay. I approve of that and think it's a good management. That's my motion, that we go ahead and accept, approve the resolution for the emergency election centers. I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Make that unanimous. Hannah, thank you, you're the kind of unsung hero of the election world. You work so very hard, I watch you in and out. You're very much appreciated and not done unnoticed, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Next, we have, I guess this will be Dustin's, correct?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you are well aware, we belong to a health trust called the Trust of Arizona Local Government Employee Benefit Trust. We're part of that health trust pool with five other counties. And it's been a very successful and beneficial pool for the last twenty-plus years. As we've transitioned over to Gallagher over the last couple of years, some things have changed, minor things such as where their office is located and things like that. So what this item is, it's just an amendment to that trust document, changing minor things like office address. It renews the trust for an additional twenty years. Now, that doesn't commit Graham County to be with this trust for twenty years. It just furthers the life of the trust itself. Every, every three, three years, each county poll is voted to stay in the trust. And then, of course, we can leave the trust really at any time, given the specifics in the contract. But what this amendment does to the trust is it changes the address, it extends the life of the trust for another twenty years, and then it directs where the audit for the trust can be obtained and sent. So basically, those three minor things on this resolution.
Comments?
No, it's basically a pool. And by pooling with other counties, rural counties, we're able to get a much better, manage our, the benefits expenses. And it's a great idea. And otherwise, we don't have the leverage and the options. But if we pool our, the number of employees, then we're a lot more attractive to provide her. So it's a great idea. And it's a twenty-year renewal. And it's excellent, that's what we need to do. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we do based on our county manager's suggestion that we renew and the fact that we've got a history, a twenty-year history of great performance that we go ahead and renew the, our agreement with LGEBT Trust.
A-L-G-E-B-T.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Make it unanimous, thank you, Dustin. Next, we have a chance for all of us to do a little report on what we've been doing in the last couple of weeks. We always start off with our county manager, Dustin Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief this morning. We're up to our ears with budgets, both locally and at the state level. As our county attorney mentioned, the legislature and the board's well where adopted the budget on Saturday evening. We're still waiting for the detail from our County Supervisors Association that really dissects that and lets us know what's in it. Saturday morning, we did get a pretty, pretty good detail of what they anticipated to be in the budget, but things did change, so we're still sorting through all of that. There are things that will affect the county and will affect our budget, so we will be working through that this week. And then we've been working quite a bit on all of the department's budget asks. We've visited a lot of your departments, talked with a lot of you for further clarification, for some alternatives, and for some different brainstorming. So we appreciate everyone working with us on those things as we try to put this together. Our next budget meeting with the board will be on July first. So following this regular board meeting, we'll jump into a work session to further hone down on that and hopefully get really close to where we need to be to adopt the preliminary budget on July fifteenth. We're, of course, watching our revenues very closely at this time. We did get some more revenues in, the state shared sales tax for the final month. Did come in slightly higher than last year, so that was great to see. And again, for this year compared to last year, still about flat, about twenty-five thousand dollars behind last year's. And then our local sales tax, our last month, came in at three hundred and ten thousand, which was a really good number. So locally, the local sales tax number for the last month of the year came in really well. We're very happy to see that. We're in the process, just a couple project updates. Our Gila River fire mitigation, our herbicide bid documents, or actually just requesting quotes are out and we'll be getting those in shortly. And I believe that's all I'll report for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dustin. Paul, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Busy couple of weeks, budget meetings with the rest of our group. And was able to support the Substance Abuse Coalition by attending a meeting, local committee to end homelessness, various community organizations, and that's my report.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to, last week I had a opportunity to go out to the Sheriff's Department and get kind of a partial tour of it and see the kitchen and look at some of the stuff that we're working on for the Sheriff's Department and our budgets. But I just want to, I just want to express to TJ and Sheriff Allred and Jeff McCormes, what a great facility that is and very professional and what a good job you guys do there. And thank you for your, your job well done there.
Well, thank you. I just want to note that on the sixth, we, very exciting time, I attended the groundbreaking out at the search and rescue, their new facility they're building out there. And I want to thank them guys, I sound like a broken record on that. But Search and Rescue does so much in this community that people don't realize. And I want to express my gratitude to them. On the tenth, I had a Substance Abuse Executive Board meeting. And then on the eleventh, of course, our budget work sessions, we was all there. Thirteenth, quarterly elected official meeting. And again, they're a broken record, but we are so blessed with our elected officials and our department heads, as hard as they work with their budgets and they keep things down and we all work together. So I'll just express my gratitude for that. And on Friday, the fourteenth, I had the opportunity to go to EAC to a private presentation about the future of EAC and the directions they're heading and all their programs. It was quite eye-opening, the amount of money that they contribute back to this community. I believe it was a quarter of a billion dollars that they contribute back in taxes and different type of programs. So I thought that was quite impressive. I had no idea that they did that much for us, so I want to just thank them. And that would be the end of my report. Next, we have to call the public and I don't see any. So we will go ahead, we need to open some bids for the Norton Road and Rayleigh Intersection reconstruction bids.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While we're opening these, looks like we received two bids. And this, this project is one that we received some, some funding from the state out of their last budget. We've already done some preliminary work on the irrigation. We're grateful for the farmers that work with us to be able to reroute some of those things and provide us some more right-of-way that we needed to widen this intersection and make it more traversable, especially for the semi-trucks and large tractor equipment driving through there. So this first one is from HT four. Their total bid number, make sure I'm not missing anything, two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents. It's like their bid or their, their bond is also included. This next one is from CKC Construction and Materials. And their total bid is one hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and thirty cents. And they both acknowledged they received addendum number one. Said all the addendums there were. County Engineer Bryce, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's great to have local companies bidding on this work and look forward to getting it done. I move that we go ahead and refer these two bids to County Manager and Engineering Highway Department for review for conformity and then award to the lowest qualified bidder. I'll second that motion.
Make that unanimous, thank you. Well, that, that'll, we need to go into the executive session, so I will close the regular session and we will convene after we're done.
Time's certain at nine thirty, isn't it? Time's certain at nine thirty?
Are we waiting on that?
Thank you Supervisor David, yes. The attorney needed a time certain because he had some other business this morning, our contract attorney that is. And it is nine thirty certain.
I'm sorry, I overlooked that. So we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting tonight, I guess? Yes, we are adjourned. Sorry, I overlooked that.
We're good. Okay, I'd like to come out of the executive session and close that and reconvene our regular board meeting and go ahead vice chairman to see if we have a motion on what we discussed.
Yes sir, I'll make a motion to agree to the stipulation to dismiss in the case of Nature Suite LLC versus Graham County in case number 2023-000290. I will. Text court case.
Do I make that unanimous since there's only two of us? I suppose so. And with that being said, there's nothing else. We will adjourn this meeting officially. Thank you guys.